It's 12:00 PM and I would like to call the September 16th, 2025 special town council meeting to order. And if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. So nice to see everyone in the morning. I'll start with additions, deletions, substitutions to the agenda. Caitlin?
No, Mayor.
And council.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we have at least an hour and a half for council discussion and that the meeting go to 4 o'clock if necessary to accomplish that. We haven't had public, I keep saying the wrong thing. We haven't had council comments for at least two or three months. And I think that that's something we need to rectify by allowing us to have sufficient time tonight or today to talk about whatever. So I'd like a second on that motion.
A second.
Discussion. Caitlin, did we advertise this till 3:00?
On the agenda, it says 12 o'clock.
But not, not a definite stop time.
It's not a definite, it's up to council if you wish to proceed further.
And I have no problem extending it, but I think, Mary Ann, you had an obligation, right? And that's the reason we started at noon.
I remember Len Ruben said that, that stop.
Mary Ann, your microphone, talk into.
Okay, I remember Len Ruben, our lawyer, saying 3 o'clock is a dead stop. Now, how many items do we have on the agenda?
One.
One. So I think 3 hours should be enough to discuss one item and still have time for council comments. Remember, citizens comment for 3 minutes and they manage to say what they want in 3 minutes. So if we get each 15 minutes or 10 minutes, that should be plenty.
And Mary Ann, do you have to leave at 3 o'clock? That's the question.
Well, I planned on leaving and I have obligations, yes.
And Len, are you obligated to anything after 3?
No.
Okay, should we play it by ear and just hope that we can get through it and then make that decision?
I would like council members to have each 15 minutes to speak at the very least, which if you multiply 15 minutes times 5 is an hour and 15 minutes, I believe. And that would be fair because again, we haven't had council comments since at least June or July.
Right.
And, you know, I think that having time for discussion or whatever it is, is a procedural necessity. It is on the agenda. At every council meeting, it says council comments and we don't do it. So I believe it's important for the efficiency of this board.
Yeah, I think we should have council comments because you're right, Dee Dee, we have not had them for a while. John, go ahead. I'll let you decide if you want to go ahead and, and complete that motion or just play it by ear when we get to that point.
I'd like to see council comments start at 1:45, no later than that.
Okay.
So that's a good idea.
So we just need to, you know, keep attention to the fact that at 1:45, hopefully we'll have the strategic plan wrapped up and then we can start council comments. Is that okay?
Do I need that in the motion, Caitlin?
Um, it's to have, the motion was to have an hour and a half for council comments.
Starting at 1:45 PM.
So.
Exactly. Are you a minute, 1:45?
So one hour and 15 minutes is plenty. You can have 10 of my 15 minutes if you need to talk more.
And Len, just before we do the roll call, is there a reason why we need motions on this or can we just have a consensus?
You can do it by consensus, but there was a motion made.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We can go ahead and do a roll call on it then because I'm fine with it.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
What was the motion again? Did we start comments at 1:45?
Correct.
Perfect. Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Just so the council knows, I think that Len, if you could guide us more on that, maybe during, right before council comments, just so that, you know, the motions are coming up and if we can do it by consensus, you know, we don't have to go through the entire roll call. So next on the agenda, and that's it, right? Anyone else have additions, deletions, substitutions? No? Okay, comments from the town manager?
Not me.
None at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, town attorney?
Not me.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Staff?
No, Mayor.
Comments? All right, we're going to go to comments from the public, please.
Kathy Peterson?
Oh, you are Kathy Peterson.
Hi, my name is Kathy Peterson and I am a Juno resident. I live in Ocean Ridge. I have attended all the meetings about the master plan and Juno Beach, going all the way back to the presentation at Lagerhead. And I've also watched the town, the work session on YouTube. So I've made it a point to try to be fairly tuned in to this very complicated issue. Okay, that being said, what I've heard through all these meetings is that no members of the community are for the master plan and making our community bigger, bulkier, and more dense. There wasn't one person that said, yay, let's make it, let's do this. Everybody has been against it. And I understand, I've been listening to you also, and I understand about SB 180, that you are constricted with a, you cannot make it, the rules and the regulations more loose, I mean, more strict. Okay, what I don't understand is why you're doing the opposite with both the residential and with the commercial. With the residential, the Harmony guidelines, you're taking those away, which means you're taking away your power to say, that doesn't fit in this community. Now, as a residential property owner, I think that people should be able to do what they want with their own property. But to take the Harmony guidelines away takes your power away from saying, this doesn't really fit in, in our, in our community. And you're doing the opposite of what people want. We've all said, we want to keep Juno Beach, Juno Beach. But if we get bigger, bulkier, and more dense, then we are doing the opposite of that. As far as the commercial goes, the SB 180, when that came into play, the rules were 75, 25. Okay, I would prefer that you keep it 75, 25, with no variances and no exemptions for commercial property. By loosening the zoning laws, you are doing the exact opposite of what the community wants. 90-10 is the opposite of keeping our town small.
You can have another 30 seconds if you want.
Okay, and that's really all I wanted to say. I would, I would, and that's from everything I've read, from everything I've listened to, and I've been doing a lot of listening, and it's taking a lot for me to get up here and speak about it, that's what I'm hearing. And I hope you are hearing that too. But again, doing the opposite of keeping our town small is not okay. Thank you.
Nancy Grabowski?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. And thank you for your efforts on behalf of the residents of Juno Beach. I know everybody brings their own mind and their own perspective and their own way of viewing things. And that's what we want. We want, and I observed that when I attended the, the work, there was the work session or the workshop on the master plan. And I, I thought that was probably one of the best meetings that I've attended, to be honest with you, because I saw both staff, the professionals, the town attorney, the town manager, all speak freely about what their positions, what their thinking is. Some people kind of shifted when they learned a new piece of information. That's the process that, that we are most fortunate to have here and in this country and the process that I respect you for and so forth. I don't know if you recognize the name or not, but I did send an email to the council this morning, which I'm going to read in case you didn't have a chance to see it yourself. Dear members of the town council, thank you, excuse me, for the opportunity to convey my opinion on your vote on September 8th to remove Harmony Appearance Review for single-family homes from the town code. I was shocked and dismayed to learn this, particularly after the town council had previously voted on three occasions, May 2nd, May 28th, and July 23rd, to keep these provisions for the size of new structures in place. Additionally, at the September 8th meeting, it is my understanding that a non-agenda item was added at the last minute, calling for a vote to remove Harmony Appearance Review. I find it troubling that there was no advanced public knowledge of this proposal. Furthermore, after attending the workshop meeting, as I said before, on the master plan, I came away with the impression that it would be prudent to refrain from making changes to the town codes until the master plan was completed. As well, I thought that the council found merit in proceeding with a survey of residents to garner accurate information on residents' opinions. It is apparent to me that the overwhelming majority of residents are greatly concerned with retaining our quality of life and property values, and that the Harmony, Harmony codes are key to this goal. In the absence of Appearance Review for new construction of single-family homes, staff loses its tools to address bulk, mass, and scale in the context of the character of the neighborhood and community. If I remember correctly, the town attorney has clarified the reasonable size context regulation is not a taking, and that our current Harmony codes can continue. Under the circumstances, I think it is important and appropriate for the council to take a step back, and I respectfully ask the council for a procedural reconsideration, meaning that one of the council members who voted in favor and put forward a, to put forward a resolution to rescind that action, restore the Harmony codes.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up because I've given you 3 and 1/2 minutes so far. Sorry.
I will wrap it up. New developers coming into Juno Beach cannot be expected to regulate themselves. Harmony Review has not blocked reasonable redevelopment of the existing homes. It provides tools to keep projects compatible.
I actually need you to wrap it up so I can be fair to everybody. Thank you. Thank you so much.
He submitted to the town clerk, not sure if you saw it, but there was an art, there was an article in the Palm Beach Post on September 3rd.
Yeah, if you want to, we can go ahead and put that, you know, give that to the clerk and she can make sure we all get it. Thank you. Thank you.
And Bosa?
And Bosa, 765 Hibiscus Avenue.
Nancy, you could give the clerk your letter as well. Okay, thank you.
No, I'm a huge proponent of property rights and the rights of individuals. I have given you each something that, of course, which Len had agreed with, that there can be a taking without it being eminent domain. Len, a regulatory taking is also known, which is, which is basically taking our property rights or the property rights of owners away, is, is a violation of property rights and does take your, taking property rights away, of course, takes value away. Counsel, in addition, in addition, state law, and Len, please correct me again if I'm wrong. Our Harmony, this Harmony codes ordinance, I don't like to call even Harmony, Ordinance 780 is superseded by the state law. Am I correct? I mean, in other words, the state law.
Look, state law always preempts to the extent it expressly preempts.
Yes.
Senate Bill 180 doesn't preempt the Harmony regulations. Senate Bill 180 is just anything more restrictive or burdensome.
Okay, we're not having a discussion up here. Anne, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, so Senate Bill 180 does however state that we cannot make municipal laws more restrictive, which Ordinance 780 does. Therefore, it's a violation of the state law. Finding ways to circumvent the law is not good. It's not, it's not ethical. And y'all are here to protect us. Every lawsuit that occurs in town costs every single person in this town money. It's, the town has been discovered, big homes are being built. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of property rights. When you buy a piece of property, you should know what you can do with it. And, and another thing, if you buy a piece of property and you, you've got the zoning in place, you come in, there's setbacks, there's height, you hire an architect, you design your house, and then you come before the council and they say you can't do it, what, what do you think is going to happen? We're going to get sued. And everybody in this town is going to have to pay for it. Thank you.
Aldo Rivera?
I really wasn't prepared this morning to address this subject, but since there seems to be a few people that want to address it, I'll add my words to it as well. Dear member, the mayor, councilors, and staff of Juno Beach, one of the things that makes Juno Beach so special is the balance we've worked hard to protect, natural beauty, a calm and welcoming community, and a local government that has been careful and fiscally responsible. Nearly half our land is preserved, and people choose to live here because it feels different from many, so many coastal towns that have given in to overdevelopment. That's why the recent decision to remove Harmony from our developmental review standards is so concerning. For decades, Harmony has been a safeguard. It ensured that new projects respected their surroundings, protected neighborhood character, and fit into the overall fabric of our town. Without it, we're left with only numbers and measurements. But numbers alone can't capture what makes a community feel right. The staff explained the changes by pointing to Florida statute Bill 180, saying Harmony is quote, "too subjective" and could create legal risks. But subjectivity is a normal part of planning. Every decision, traffic, environmental impact, neighborhood fit, involves judgment. That, the law doesn't forbid subjectivity. It simply requires that towns use it fairly, consistently, and with supporting evidence. Other Florida communities have kept Harmony, scale, and compatibility in their code. Juno Beach can too. What makes this even harder to understand is that we haven't sought a second legal opinion on something this important, our future. Why rely on only one perspective? Asking for independent legal advice wouldn't weaken our current council. It would strengthen the town's position. Just like we consult outside experts for finance, engineering, or safety, it makes sense to do the same here. In fact, our town ordinances and longstanding policies suggest that Juno Beach could successfully defend itself in court if our decisions are careful, well documented, and rooted in the community's vision. Recent projects show that restraint is possible. Both Palti, Coretta, though commercial in nature, chose not to build to the absolute maximum size they could have. But that restraint was voluntary. Without Harmony as a requirement, future developers may feel, may not feel, the same responsibility. The message we're sending is that maximizing land value is more important than neighborhood character. And that opens the door to exactly the kind of overreach Harmony used to prevent. The changes won't happen all at once. That's the danger. Over time, each oversized project, each exception to community standards, each small concession adds up, and one day.
Aldo, can, you're going to wrap it up here because?
Yes, you know what I have to say yet. And one day, we could look around and realize we've lost the Juno Beach we love. This is why Harmony matters. Council staff and P&amp;Z board members are elected, hired, or selected just to process, not just to process permits. They're elected to look out for the collective rights of the whole community.
Aldo, you need to wrap it up, okay? Thank you. Just.
Development can and will happen, but it should always be responsible, measured, and harmonious. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Stelludo?
John Stelludo, 401 Sunset Way. Thank you again for listening to me. I think it is a taking, okay? It is a taking of our property. It's taking 25%. The legal argument is taking the value of property for a public purpose. In our case, is analogous to the taking of property for public purpose, which is prohibited by the Fifth Amendment and the Constitution and made applicable by the states by the 14th Amendment. So they're basically saying, you are taking my property. And I, I see people get up and they don't live on the ridge, and they're telling you, we want it to look a certain way. Well, that's their value. Each one of you look different. Some have long hair, some have short hair, some are talls. We're all different. And that was unique about Juno Beach. We weren't all the same. We weren't Mediterranean. We weren't this. And that's what we're losing. Keep Juno Beach, keep Juno Beach by keeping it the way it's been developing now. We have a variety. We have 12-story condos here. We have a 12-story condo over there. We've got all types of things. I just want my property the way I bought it. When you bought something, you don't want somebody to come along and take part of it. And that's what you're doing. And I'm never going to feel whole. You, you never even brought this up with the community. You never talked to your neighbors. You never told them this was going down the line. No, didn't say nothing. All of a sudden, there was a meeting on, and I thought it was just the roof types. I was tired of fighting about, ah, let them put different roofs. But this Harmony and all this is not Juno Beach. Juno Beach is a creative town. It's eclectic. It has different types of houses, just like it has different types of people. And you guys are ruining it by, by trying to squeeze it in and put all these restrictions that are worse than an H O L. We purposely, I didn't buy in the bluffs. I could have bought in the bluffs. That's what you want to make our town look like, okay? I don't want it to look like that. I want one house to be different. Now, if you guys don't like that, maybe you should leave. But that's what Juno Beach was when I came here. And that's the property that I bought, and I want to retain that same property and the rights that came with it. It's as simple as that. Give me what I bought. Don't take away. And you're taking away. Thank you.
William Kimball?
Good afternoon. I guess first thing would be is, why is a special meeting at 12 o'clock? That's pretty bizarre. You'd think you'd give residents a chance to be here because it's hard for a lot of people to make it at 12. So that was strange for a special one. But it's special nonetheless. Special, it's a good word. Special is harmony, not chaos. If we allow harmony to go away and we allow the fear mongering that's, you're going to lose your property rights and all this nonsense that's been kind of thrown around by a lot of people saying, if we get rid of Harmony, we're going to get sued, or, you know, if we keep Harmony, we're going to get sued, and we're going to be insolvent, and all these fear mongering tactics. I mean, I'd hope we, we could, you know, fight to not get sued. And if we did, we have enough to back ourselves to say that we didn't go against these supposed rules of harmony that are in place. And we just had something pass yesterday that was 7,500 square feet. And I don't, that's, I mean, if you want that, that's good in Palm Beach. But, I mean, here, it's just going to pave the way for the nonsense to continue. So if we look to the north, it's McMansion eyes. If we look to the south with Ocean One, that, that development got away with. I still can't believe that we lost that whole topography. We actually took out the highest point in Juno, right there, unless I'm wrong. When I was a little kid, the Buzzards used to live up there and I used to go there. And that's gone. Like, you, you actually just let them take that down. So to what level do we start just letting that happen more and more as we move forward? So my suggestion to you guys is to pay attention to what the gentleman who spoke, I don't know where he is, before John did. And, and, you know, really pay attention to what you have here. Pay attention to the beauty of a small town. It's going fast. And you see that this SB 180 is such a fear-driven thing that communities, the Guardians of Martin County, others up in northern Florida, the west coast of Florida are fighting back and saying, we can hold out on SB 180 or we just repeal it. So why are we so afraid of it, allowing it to be our chains that just bind us to say, hey, SB 180, don't be afraid, we're going to get sued? Well, if we care about our town and we care about our people, then stand up for us. Get sued. Say, you know what? This is for the people, not for those who are wishing to come here and exploit us and take away what we have here. Because you're going to see this place go faster, 7,500 feet, of a, square feet of a house to go in up there, which is a McMansion. It's just a tipping point. It's like, oh, well, they got it in. Yay. And then what do we do? We all just stare there and stand each other and look at each other with, as the birds die because they don't have a tree to land in, over at our McMansions at each other's yard. Hey, how you doing down there? So that's my point to make for this. It's sad that this is at 12 o'clock. It should have been at the end of the day when people could come. And please just do, do it for your residents, not, not for developers and not for real estate people, for your residents. I mean, they work these jobs, but, you know, listen to them. And John, I appreciate your, your passion in all this too, but you're all, you're, a lot of you are being lied to that your property rights are going to go away. They're not making more Juno land. So thank you and do your jobs.
Those are all the comments I received.
All right. I just want to let everybody know that this is called a special meeting because it's a continuation from our September 8th meeting to try to get our past agenda items complete before our next meeting. And we do have to coordinate our meetings with staff, with our town attorney, with all of the council, five council members up here. So this was the time that was best suited for all the councils. So that's why it's at noon instead of being after hours. And I just wanted to let everyone know. And we'll move on to our council action items and discussion. And the first one is going to be discussion on proposed strategic plan by consultant Jim Karas. And we'll do public comments and then I'll let you start, Diana, and introduce it. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Not that I receive, but I do believe Mr. Karas is on Zoom and is available. and is available if you have any questions.
Okay. Did he say he wanted to do a public comment or just available?
He advised me just available.
Okay, great. Diana, let you go ahead and start.
The strategic plan is an item that the council voted on to pursue and hire. We hired a consultant. The consultants fulfilled his obligations to hold public meetings, to interview each of the council members, interview town staff, have a workshop with town staff. There were numerous parts of his contract that he completed. He provided the town with a strategic plan in April, as was part of his contract. And I wanted to make sure this was on the agenda, and we can have Mr. Karas speak when I've completed here. But I wanted to make a motion to make final payment, pay his, the last invoice for Mr. Karas. He hasn't been paid yet. And then I would like to move forward with adopting the strategic plan. We can have a workshop as a town council to go through the parts of the strategic plan and make sure that the final, that we adopt is something that everyone can agree on. What I presented here in the package was Jim Karas' strategic plan, Part A and Part B.
If you've got a motion on the table, second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
Do you want to have a discussion?
Yeah, we have to have discussion. We just needed a second on the motion in order to make them...
Okay, so the motion is to pay Mr. Karas his final?
No, we've got it. She, DeeDee, seconded it for you. So you can go ahead and finish your discussion.
Ready to call for a vote on the motion?
We need discussion. We're not ready to call a vote yet. So do you have more discussion, or is that it?
I have more discussion on the strategic plan. I don't have more discussion on this item that he, that I'd already stated that he completed all of his contract items, and he provided us with his strategic plan in April. So I'd like to pay him his final invoice.
Should I add discussion if I have to or need to?
Well, let me start, DeeDee, because I have a lot of questions that need to come out of this. I think we have, on this particular item, we have two options here. So Mr. Karas has been paid $15,586.68 towards a contract that was $19,000, $19,000, $18,000, it looks like, $67.93. The two options I think the council has is either to, for me, is to let Jim finish the contract. I don't feel the contract is finished. I did have a conversation with Mr. Karas. We talked about the tasks that are complete and not complete. He has completed 1, 2, 3, and Part 4. He needs to complete Part 4, 4A, 5, and 6. So I don't, I've never heard... Diana, I'm talking, thank you, just wait. I've never, first of all, I want to get into the fee in a little bit, but I've never heard of paying a contractor the full amount when they haven't finished the process. What we still need to obtain from the strategic plan is the objectives, pull those out into individual objectives. We need to prioritize the objectives. We need to review and edit those objectives as a group and as staff. We have to have Mr. Karas present a final draft. And then we need to have him present a final plan in council, in the public. Those are still tasks that need to be completed. To pay someone in full when you haven't completed your job or the project, I think, is irresponsible of us. Having spoke to Mr. Karas about this, he is willing to do this. He is looking for a little bit of compensation. You know, we want to try and make this work for both parties, but we're not finished with the product. It's absolutely not finished. We don't have a final product yet. So I don't feel it's right to pay the complete amount. He's fine with that. So if we can move forward with perhaps doing a new contract where these items are shown to be completed, we can go ahead and designate the amounts. It's about $3,000 or $4,000. I think I've got here $3,472 is left on the contract. We can divide that into the tasks that are remaining and pay accordingly. But I think that's the smart and responsible way to handle this and not just to say, we're going to pay and then not have a final product. So that's my feeling on it. Can have discussion, and I can have DeeDee, if you want to go ahead and go.
Yeah, I seconded that motion because my understanding up till this very moment before you spoke, the moment of the motion, was that he was being prevented from completing the task. And that's why I was saying, well, if he's being prevented from completing it and his material is being used, for instance, the town manager directed staff to integrate some of the strategic plan suggestions into the budget, which we're approving. So his plan was being used. And for that very reason, I would say he should be paid. Now, if we're going to actually allow him to finish the contracted work, then certainly we would wait until the end to provide the final payment or work out a pay schedule that's, you know, in line with the procedural completion. So that was my motivation for approving that he should be paid because elements are being used. And it would be unfair to a consultant to not pay him when we are using parts of the plan.
So you're fine with recontracting with him, showing the final amount due and paying accordingly to the tasks that are finished?
Yes. If he's willing to continue working and, you know, bring it to completion, then yes.
Okay. Mary Ann?
What I'm hearing now is we are looking for a compromise. I mean, where both sides are equally unhappy and happy. So I think what DeeDee just said made sense that we want to have a product that we can use. We want to give the consultant the opportunity to finish his work as specified by the contract. And yeah, I consider this a compromise that could be accepted by both sides.
Thank you. Diana, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, I would like 4A, 5, and 6 that you referenced. Can you give copies to all the, to the council up here? Because we don't have that.
I'm sorry, what did you?
Piece of what?
You said that 4A, 5, and 6 were not completed. I don't know what you're talking about. I need to see the contract. Or is it part of the plan?
I think this was sent by email to all of us.
Will you copy it and send it up and share it?
Sure.
Now?
Well, I have writing all over this. So yeah, I guess we could copy this. I don't have a problem with that.
We can print the scope.
You can, okay. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're talking about the contract, I have a couple contract questions for the town attorney and the town manager, if you'd allow it as part of our discussion.
Absolutely.
Len, first question is for you. This contract dated July 2024. I don't know if you have a copy of it.
I don't.
Did you review it?
I don't even, I need to see it. I can't even tell you if I reviewed it or not.
I need it back. I only have one copy. Somebody signed it, I don't know who.
I'm not sure I ever did review it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pass it back. Next question would be for the town manager. Do you know why the town attorney did not review the contract?
I was not here at the time, so I couldn't speak to what transpired with the contract, whether it came to council, how it worked.
All right, thanks. So my question on the contract, it appears to be a contract produced by Mr. Karas and signed by somebody in the town. I don't know whose signature that is.
If Caitlin witnessed...
I believe it was, it was Mr. Dias.
Oh, this is David Dias would be...
Sean, if you let me see it, because Mr. Dias was the manager at the time.
Assuming it was probably David Dias. The contract doesn't have any terms as far as administering the contract that I could see. So as it was produced by the contractor, I believe any ambiguity would fall in favor of the party that did not prepare the contract. So I'm assuming the administer of the, the administration of the contract is to be by the town manager. And as such, the town manager made a decision in administering the contract that it would, that the work was faulty. And that's the end of it, as far as I'm concerned.
All right. And I know Rob is actually accurate, and he was looking out for the best interest of the town when he reviewed the draft strategic plan. He wasn't happy with the content. He felt we should reevaluate the process and, you know, because it doesn't meet the expectations. It was organizationally deficient. And I'm talking for you, Rob, so I should let you talk for yourself. How's that?
Sure. You know, one of the early meetings that I had with Mr. Karas upon my arrival was, first of all, a draft that was being circulated to staff for comment was miserably deficient. It had blank pages, little black squares of screenshots. It was entirely incomplete. And I was being asked, as the new town manager, to review that as a draft to present to my town council and the Juno Beach community. There is no way that I could advance that document for anyone's review and consideration. So before I would budge off the dime, and I have a copy of that version sitting right here on the floor beneath me, before I could advance that version of the report for anyone's further consideration, I required Mr. Karas to put it in a format where there was actually something for me to take a look at and review. When he did that, we received the report that Vice Mayor Protem Davis is referring to as the completed strategic plan in April. Arguably, by the project task list, there's more to it than that, but that's a whole nother question for now. Among the deficiencies that were cited were compound objectives. You know, a strategic plan, if you've seen some good ones, they normally have pretty clear, smart objectives. They're specific, they're measurable, they're aggressive yet realistic, they're time-bound. They're not multi-barreled objectives that contain three, five, or more objectives, all with a target for completion, some percentage complete that none of our staff were aware of. It was a mess. And so I sat down with Mr. Karas and said, Mr. Karas, you know, the way I see it is, I can't present this document to my town council and the Juno Beach community as a strategic plan that's going to guide taxpayer investments for the next three to five years on a prioritized basis. I don't even see priorities in here. I can't even differentiate which of these objectives, there's consensus around. I couldn't tell. I asked Mr. Karas about his engagement and how he reached consensus. He was unable to explain that. I asked him for a summary of his public engagement. Never received it. He indicated to me that he presented the plan to staff and received comments and made edits. I asked him for documents that showed that he did that. What comments did you get? What kind of changes did you make? None were provided. So ultimately, I said, Mr. Karas, I met with him one-on-one, face to face. I explained to him what my concerns about the report were, whether or not it could be useful in serving its intended purpose to guide significant public investment to advance strategic priorities that are aligned with community and organizational goals, including those that are in our comprehensive plan. And I said, Mr. Karas, where we're at now isn't going to get us there. The way I see it, you need some help writing because there's gobbledygook in that report. Sentences that even don't even make sense. If read as standalone sentences, they make zero sense. Can't be implemented. So get some writing support. Maybe you might try Fiverr, if you can find an independent writer who can help you, you know, give them a template, show them what good writing looks like and mirror that. And maybe you might have someone who knows a little bit more about strategic planning to take a look at your objectives and clarify them. Now, that's going to take you time and money, Mr. Karas. Is that something that you want to do? What we decided in that meeting was he was going to come back after considering whether he wanted to proceed with taking on that additional work or he wanted to separate, given the fact that he only had $3,000 left to pay on his contract, a little over $3,000, as the mayor cited. So that decision point was reached in that meeting, and he didn't come back to me. Instead, he started picking off elected officials one at a time, trying to lobby to get paid for the balance of his contract. Very unprofessional, should have never been done.
Point of order. Diane?
My name is DeeDee, and...
Oh, DeeDee, sorry, I thought that was Diana.
No, you don't tell me to stop it.
No, no, I said I thought that was Diana. And I'm not accepting your point of order.
That's a point of order, because that's not true.
The town manager is speaking. I'm not accepting the point of order. I'm going to let him continue. Thank you.
Mayor, if DeeDee raises a point of order, she has a right to raise it. If you disagree, DeeDee can ask the council to take a vote.
Absolutely. So if you want to take a vote, that's fine. But I'm not accepting the point of order as the presiding officer, John. So if you want to take a vote, that's fine. Someone want to take a vote? Or we have to go to Len first? Get his opinion, I guess.
I don't think a point of order is, he's not telling the truth. A point of order is something procedural. It's not, you know, that you disagree with what the town manager is saying. That's not a point of order.
Thank you.
So suffice it to say, Mr. Karas did not get back to me with an interest in remedying the deficiencies in the report and instead began to seek final payment as though his work products were delivered successfully. As part of his contract, it not only has items in here[1577.14] As part of his contract, it not only has items in here that are not complete, which he should not be reimbursed for unless he does come up with agreement to complete them, of course, but it also says that his work products have to be delivered in a satisfactory format. They have to meet our expectations. And my expectations, as a professional city manager, having done this for 30 years, don't quite fall to the level of accepting Mr. Karas' initial effort. In order for this report to move forward to a point where it's useful for its intended purposes, again, guiding significant public investment, he needs to isolate and prioritize the actions that he's listed in his various Excel files. He should have linkages to the comp plan, so we know which goals in our comp plan we're actually advancing. He should have a public engagement summary. Tell the public in this report how many people you reached out to, how you made sure that you got the community's pulse on what our strategic priorities are, both for the organization and the community. Demonstrate consensus on the strategic objectives that you've highlighted. Do you have staff consensus? I'll tell you right now, some of my staff didn't even know the objectives that were in this report. So how they become strategic priorities for the organization when our staff, some of them, had no idea that these objectives were even in there. Do you have consensus with town council? Does all of town council agree with the priorities that were established? I'm not sure that's the case, and Mr. Karas couldn't explain to me what he's done so far to ensure that's the case. And really, those are the primary gaps that we have to get him from having been paid already almost $16,000 of his $18,005 contract without a final deliverable being in our hands.
All right. So we're still in discussion. John, do you have anything else to add?
Yes. And I'm going to pick on the chief, since he drew the short straw here today, sit at the staff table. When someone from the town puts together a contract and administers, and if it was the chief wanting to, appointed as administrator of a contract to retrofit police cars with some kind of a radio thing in the trunk that connected to a badge, to a camera that connected in 911 technologically, and the contractor came back with a situation that was not compatible, could not work, and the chief made a determination that it's hopeless, we have to accept that as counsel. We have to accept that he's, we appointed him to do that for us. He's going to use his best judgment, and he made a call. We didn't, we didn't get a perfect chief. We got a damn good chief. And we put our faith in him that he's going to make the right call. And sometimes that call might not be exactly like we want. And it's the same with the town manager. We got a town manager that gave us 100 reasons why this, this report is faulty. I don't know each and every one of those reasons, but I do know it's, it doesn't seem to be repairable, and we have to move on without it. And we back the town manager in his determination of the person that knows the nuts and bolts the most about this situation.
Thanks, John. Diana?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Karas. And I think that there is a little bit of a disconnect here, because the contract appears to be, the contract was entered into with David Dias, and our former town manager had used Jim Karas in Stewart, and they had, and he had developed a strategic plan for Stewart. And there was some, when they got the final product, there was some massaging that they had to do in order for it to fit their goals. And so that was kind of the thought, in my mind, when we received this, that Mr. Karas was the low-cost provider. He did do the public outreach, and he did do the individual interviews, and in my mind, it was all very effective. So what I had heard the town manager say, that there weren't implementable goals within the strategic plan that we received. So I took the Word document and just put it into an AI vehicle and asked for it to, to list the actionable items. So that's what I included in the booklet here, just to show you that it doesn't take a lot of work, and it's not a time-intensive thing, and you can take the language that's here and make it into actionable goals. And then we could work from that as a town council in a work session or a workshop, and then go through each of the items and make sure that we all agree with it. I don't think these tasks five and six is, you know, council, adoption of the plan, things like that, it's not something that we would expect Mr. Karas to do necessarily. But I would like to hear from him, since he's on the line, and, and I'm still in favor of paying him for his work product and moving forward. I know that the town manager is a very experienced person and has provided us strategic plans from other locations, but for example, the workshops that Palm Beach did, they had three different contractors, and it was over $1 million. So it's just a different level than we are. This is the first time we've had a strategic plan. It was very important to the town council when they adopted it and funded it and wanted to move forward with it. And then it just stopped in April, and then we had to ask, "Where is the strategic plan? What was going on with the strategic plan?" And I personally contacted Mr. Karas. So that was not true that, that he reached, in my case, it wasn't true that he reached out to try to get funding from other sources. I reached out to him to find out what happened, because we had voted for it. I knew his deadline was April, and we never got anything. So I would still be in favor of paying him and then working as a group with the council to finalize the, the action items into prioritizing and having the action items.
So Diane, I just want to make sure I understand. You want to pay Mr. Karas, but you don't want him to continue the work? You want council to continue the work?
Not with...
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I want council to work on it, to complete it. I don't think it would be fruitful for Mr. Karas to complete the work with the dynamic that he's seen with staff. So I think that what we have now is workable, but, so I would like to move forward with that.
All right. Mary Ann?
I just would like to know, okay, I haven't talked to Mr. Karas at all. I don't know if he reached out to me or not, but there was no communication. When I'm listening to this right now, and I hear Diana talking that she put his plan into AI, I mean, why would we do this? We just go right to AI. We don't pay a consultant something, and then we adjust it by putting it to AI. And I, I tried myself using AI, and I find it's good for some things, but we are talking here about our town, a little town, a special town. Everybody says it's a gem. And I don't think that AI can do justice to this little town with all the quirks and all the different people. So I was surprised that you take a consultant, pay him a good deal of money, and then you take his work and put it in AI, and then you say, "Let's finish, let the council finish the work, but let him be paid." Somehow, that doesn't strike me as common sense.
All right, DeeDee?
Yes. Just want to note for the record that this review of this, of the strategic plan is the first time the plan has actually come before council since the meeting where we, I guess it was a brainstorming or the session that Mr. Karas had with council. So the council, we approved the, the contract and all, but we never had a chance to look at any drafts or, you know, or even speak about it as a group until Vice Mayor Protem Davis motioned to have this discussion. So we weren't allowed to see early drafts or communicate with each other about it. I take exception to Town Manager Cole's characterization that Karas started lobbying individual council members. I, too, reached out to Mr. Karas with a phone call, because I was not sure why we hadn't seen the plan. I wanted to, I started to get the, the impression that things had somehow gone awry, and I wanted his interpretation of, you know, what, what was going on. And I think, you know, to make that accusation that, you know, against Mr. Karas, that he started lobbying individual council members, I think that that, you know, quite frankly, is a pattern of unprofessional and hostile behavior from the town manager toward Mr. Karas. You know, here in an August 19 email from Rob Cole to Mr. Karas, it says, "Since your scope of service has not been completed, yes, you should stop embarrassing yourself and stop seeking payment for work not completed. You were directed not to complete work because of the numerous procedural failures in crafting it and the abysmal quality of the draft work product itself. Since you have raised the issue, kindly take a moment to forward me the initial draft report, specific comments you received from staff and council by email, and subsequent draft report returned to staff reflecting associate edits. I trust this should be relatively easy to pull from your project file." So, you know, it's sort of not fair. I mean, you know, great, you have 30 years of strategic planning experience, but that's no reason to be demeaning and rude to the consultant who's, who's, seems like he was trying to complete the project, but yet was told not to complete it. Anyway, I have, because of this unproductive and unprofessional dynamic, I would also agree with Diana that council should use the strategic plan document as sort of a goal-setting document. Let's sit with it in, in a workshop or something, or mark it up and see which elements we'd like to move forward with.
All right. DeeDee, I'm going to tell you, I think that's disrespectful, what you said about Rob Cole, because he did lobby us. He came to me to lobby me. He went to the town attorney. So I think that was very disrespectful. DeeDee, I'm talking. Thank you.
Well, then let me talk when you're done.
I am talking, so you have to wait your turn. It's the disrespect that we have on council. When someone's talking, you have to wait for the other person to finish. Then you can talk again. It is, it is absolutely disrespectful, disrespectful of you to say that, because he did lobby us. He lobbied me, he went to the town attorney directly, which is not what a consultant should be doing. And so that's wrong. And, and so for you to bring that out and to do that to our town attorney, I think is wrong as well. In this particular case, it looks like we have two options. It doesn't look like anyone wants to continue with Mr. Karas. So the option is to pay him or not pay him. I don't feel like we should pay him. If we want to continue it as a council, we can do that. We just need to figure out the next process and discuss that, and we can put that on an agenda item. But with no, it doesn't sound like anyone wants to continue with Mr. Karas. So if that's the case, we're all on the same page with that, or at least we have a consensus on that. We probably need a motion on that. But we also need a motion on any final payments. I do not believe he should get a final payment, because he has not completed half of task four, task five, or task six. The major parts of this strategic plan is the final plan. It's the edits. We haven't done any edits on this. And so I do not believe we should pay him. And so the first question is going to be, we probably have to take care of the motion that was on the table, and if you can re-read the motion. Caitlin?
The motion made was to make final payment to Mr. Karas and move forward with adopting the strategic plan.
Okay. So let's do a roll call on that.
I'm expecting the roll call be prior to us finishing discussion, Mayor.
All right. But the majority of people did not want to go forward with, with doing the project, I thought. So, okay, go ahead, and we'll do discussion.
First of all, you, you told DeeDee, after you were finished, you were going to let her speak.
Well, we're going through.
Thank you, John.
Before the roll call, I believe. And also, Diana expressed a preference for allowing Jim Karas to have his say being on Zoom, and I would support that, that letting Jim Karas speak, he's on Zoom, and I think that the time, if we're going to allow him to weigh in, it's before the roll call on his pay. So those, those two points.
And, and John, that's fine. We'll do a, we got to get a consensus to let him speak. He didn't speak at the beginning, and I think what I'm trying to avoid is having a debate between a consultant and the CEO of our town. I don't think that's appropriate, but if the consensus is to let him speak, I can, well, is that a consensus? I need that. John, you're agreeing to let him speak? DeeDee?
Yes. It's not disrespectful of me, please, let me finish. It's not disrespectful of me to, to point out the dynamic, and it's not disrespectful of me to say that I did not have an opportunity to discuss the strategic plan with this council prior to this meeting. That's not disrespectful. It's pointing out a timeline, and the timeline is provable. So, so I resent you telling me what's disrespectful or not. I'm pointing out the fact of the matter, and all of these things have led to this cumulative problem that we have with, with the strategic plan.
And I'll respond to that, because you're assuming that he didn't lobby. You said he didn't lobby, but you're talking about yourself, and he did lobby.
Well, we all just went through, we went through, all of us, you want to go through for the record?
It doesn't matter if he lobbied one or two. Lobbying the attorney and lobbying the mayor is pretty much lobbying. So it's, we don't need to debate that any longer. We need to go ahead and let Mr. Karas speak. So Mr. Karas, if you want to say anything, go ahead.
I've asked him to unmute, but I don't see any action being taken.
All right. More discussion? Diana, do you have any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Mary Ann?
No.
DeeDee?
Nothing else.
All right. Are we ready to roll call on the motion? Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor Wheeler?
Say the motion one more time, since we...
The motion is to make a final payment to Mr. Karas and move forward with adopting the strategic plan.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern? Thank you.
Nay. I would separate those two parts of the motion.
Motion fails.
Okay. So moving forward, does anyone want to make a motion? John? Diana?
I'd make a motion to adopt the strategic plan and work on it as a council.
Do we have a second on that?
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Do we have any other motions?
I do think...
I move that we each give our opinions, how to move forward at this point, since we've decided not to adopt this strategic plan and have everyone weigh in on, for up to two minutes, on what they'd like to see to go from here, where we'd like to go from here.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and start on that. Or it needs, that's what you'd like to do? You didn't say a motion, right, John?
Motion to have every council member spend up to two minutes explaining what, where they'd like this to go from here.
Second.
All right. I'll go ahead and start. I don't think we should...
Roll call if you're going to start?
Well, we have discussion, don't we? Don't we have discussion on that?
If you want to discuss the motion, yes.
Yeah, we need, we can discuss the motion first, so that we're discussing everything. Or we can do a roll call, because we can talk about it after the roll call.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Is that, that we want to discuss it now?
Each council member gets two minutes to discuss how...
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll go ahead and start. I think that we should not continue with Mr. Karas, and I don't think we should pay Mr. Karas for any additional work. And then put another agenda item on the schedule for a future date to go ahead and discuss how we want to move forward, or we can discuss it at this point, too. John?
I'd like to see the town manager come back with the recommendation on how to move forward.
Thank you. Diana?
I think a strategic plan is critical for our town. At the League of Cities meeting, I went to a meeting about how staff and council can work together and be the most efficient, productive for their residents and for their taxpayers. And in that meeting, it was said, "If you adopt meeting protocols and procedures and have a strategic plan, you can ensure that you're all on the same page." And I just hope that the reason the strategic plan wasn't adopted was it wasn't substantive disagreements with what the residents and council had put into the strategic plan. And that was my only concern, or that was one of my concerns as to why it was stopped in April, is that maybe, for example, in the growth section, it's sound and slow growth, and there are several steps and strategic initiatives on slowing growth. And since the staff has, has been in favor of maximum size for our residential and the 90/10 for our commercial areas, it just makes me see that maybe there's a substantive disagreement on some of Jim Karas' items that he derived from those meetings with the community. So I just, I hope that's not it. And I do think it's critically important that we're all on the same page, especially for spending the taxpayers' money. And it seems that we have used the strategic plan in this budgeting process, and that's, that's why I believe that Mr. Karas should be paid and that we should move forward with the draft this year, since it is a coalition of several meetings and public input, staff input, council input. And, and I'd hate to lose that, because this taxpayers' money, and we should, we should move forward with it as it's written. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
I didn't really get to what Diana said. Did we just vote on not paying Mr. Karas?
No, you're getting, giving your opinion. John wants the opinion.
No, but I mean, didn't we just vote on not paying him? Okay. So, you know, when she said she was going backwards again, I would like to go forward. And the question is, if we, as the council, feel, feel competent enough to come up and finish the consultant's work, and I would go along and say, "It should be the town manager and his staff who come with a proposal to us, because they are the experts, they have the experience." And I would like to rely on them mostly.
Thank you. DeeDee?
Yeah, I'd actually like to ask Len what the contractual obligation is to pay him. I mean, even if it's not in the contract per se, we still have purchasing rules. And I had looked at something Emily sent me. I had asked for some information on how we pay contractors, you know, that there's like a reasonable expectation that contractors and vendors will get paid.
So there's a reasonable expectation, right? If the work is completed, that they will get paid. But, you know, it's, everyone's talked about how the work's not completed, he's been paid for what's completed. That seems to be the will of a majority of the council.
As far as moving forward, I think that strategic plan has some good elements in it. It does seem to contain things that council had put forward during the session with Mr. Karas. I believe it incorporates elements that the residents were interested in, and that we shouldn't just throw it all out, and that council should go through the document and highlight or pull out, let's say, five things that we want to see move forward, and then we can discuss those in another meeting. And that's how we often did a goal-setting meeting, where we picked five topics or areas of interest each year that would be our focus. So I would like to see us pull some, let's say, each five, highlight five items in that plan that we would like to present to each other and potentially move forward with.
All right. Thank you. And I think council is not looking at dropping the strategic plan we're going to use. We're going to use what we have so far, I think, and then kind of look at reworking it and analyzing it and having staff and council analyze that. And I'm going to give Rob the opportunity to speak as well before, hopefully, we'll get a motion.
Just a couple of things real quick. On the objectives that are contained in the report, as our council members have highlighted, I did direct our staff to at least review them, go through them, see if there are things that are viable and should be organizational priorities, and to seek funding to advance those concepts in the budget. Mr. Caris was paid a total of almost $16,000 for those ideas, and no one on staff has recommended that they all be scrapped, but rather to dig through them, find the gold nuggets, and advance them for funding and implementation. That same advice was provided to council. I asked specifically for council members to look through those objectives, to the extent that anything was in there that they wanted to make sure was continuing to be advanced, to bring that to staff, and we can talk about that in the context of our municipal financing. I would also like to take a moment just to address the innuendo that staff are some way and somehow objecting to substantive content of the strategic plan on a policy level. That's completely baseless. I've already explained what my concerns were with Mr. Caris's report and the integrity of it, purely from a strategic planning best practices perspective. My role as a city manager and our staff's role is to implement whatever policy the town council approves. In our role and capacity as staff, we are charged with both the ethical and legal obligation to apprise our town council of any information that we can have or locate that is relevant to their decision. We want informed policymaking by the town council, and we want effective, informed citizen participation. So to the extent that we have information, beliefs, or background data that would help either of those two things, I'm ethically obligated to advance that. And it's always objective, it's always factual, and it's not intended to bend or shape or in any way influence public policy in a way that impedes our ability as staff to properly implement it. But it is, again, an obligation for us to raise those issues and concerns. Town council can accept them, can reject them, can modify them as part of their policymaking authority, and staff's role, once those decisions are made, is to implement them as effectively and efficiently as we possibly can. And that is not to say that we don't sometimes present contrary viewpoints, perspectives based on our educations, our multiple years of experience, and our technical knowledge that sometimes people who come to town council positions may not have had that depth and breadth of experience arriving with them at the time that they're charged with making a decision. So we have to help by providing the best information we can, but then accepting whatever decision is made and implementing it. And to suggest anything to the contrary, that we're advocating for a specific policy and have predisposed beliefs and ideals or opinions is just a misunderstanding of what our role is as city managers and staff, and a mischaracterization of how it is that we engage with town council and the community. And I think if we could begin to work towards reducing misinformation that's being circulated to the community, on the town council, between one another, to the extent that we can actually achieve that as a policy objective, I think that's going to help in terms of reducing the temperature of some of these community conversations that are focused on very controversial topics. Let's focus on the facts of the matter, let's not continue to throw about misinformation. There's some comments today, you know, that we've heard that frankly aren't well-informed. And part of that is we keep sending information out into the community that's conflicting, and it makes it very difficult for people to gather all the facts, to differentiate how we handle commercial development review from how we handle single-family review. They have different rules and regulations. And I'm rabbit-trailing a little bit here, but the point being, let's try to be kind to one another, be factual, not use innuendo and slurs to malign anyone's reputation. Let's just try to make good decisions, and our staff will help to make those the best we can and implement whatever those decisions are made by council effectively, efficiently, and professionally. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to ask the town manager to bring us back a plan on how to move forward with a strategic plan.
Do I have a second? I'll pass the gavel and second that. Are we ready for a roll call?
Discussion?
Discussion, okay. Go ahead, John. Do you want discussion additional?
I see Mary Ann has her light on. Did you want to say something, Mary?
No, I might have the light on.
I think the light has gone by the wayside this time. So we'll just go down the line, John. Any more discussion?
Sure. I'd like to, just to point out that I think Jim Caris did the best he could under the circumstances of the low budget. Didn't work out. We get a town manager present us with a plan. He can take the ideas that he's heard at the dais, maybe DeeDee's, for us each to present five ideas of them. Do we need a consultant to help? What kind of a timeline would this take? Do we need to budget any more money for at our upcoming budget meeting? Those type of things. So I... That's the reasons I think that we need to put this back in the town manager's lap and ask him to work up a plan for us.
I'll make a discussion point. I believe that it's under the purview of the council now to decide which of these items in the plan should be our goals moving forward, and that council should meet to extract those goals and then give it to staff to put into a strategic plan. But council still has not had a chance to collate what we feel are the salient points.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Light, okay. I think that the staff should go first, not we, because I feel they have more experience in strategic planning and master plans than I have. Maybe my peers here have a lot of experience, but I personally would be very comfortable following the staff's guidelines and then discuss it and evaluate it.
Thank you. Diana?
I agree with Ms. Halpern that the council should set the goals first and then give it to staff. We're responsible to the taxpayers and responsible ultimately for the town's budget, so it should fall on the council members as elected officials.
So, John, I just want to clarify that your motion was to have staff come back with options on moving forward, not necessarily who goes first, right? We want staff to come back with those options. Can you clarify what your motion is?
My motion is to ask the town manager to produce a plan for how we should go forward with obtaining a strategic plan.
Okay, so at that time, we can discuss the process of the strategic plan when he comes forward with that, so I don't think we'll eliminate Diana and DeeDee's concerns. We need a roll call, I think, if we're done with discussion, trying to get this wrapped up. Roll call?
Councilmember Halpern?
Nay.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
All right. Thank you. Now we get to go to council comments, almost a half hour early. Do you want to take a... You okay, Len, if we start council?
I'm gonna get some...
Okay. It's council comments, so it's okay to start with that, Len. DeeDee, you want to start?
Sure. The first thing I'm going to do is make a motion to reconsider the vote taken by council on September 8th regarding the harmony item.
Second.
Thank you. When I supported the original motion, I did so in good faith, hoping to find a fair balance among differing community concerns and to move toward a better harmony code. However, I have deep concerns about how the vote came to council. The item was not included in the published agenda packet, which means our residents nor council members had an advance notice that a vote would take place. As a result, residents had no opportunity to be informed or speak on this item during their public comment period. Even members of this council weren't given the background information we needed in advance, specifically the July 21 memo from our town attorney, which laid out the voting options. This memo was only provided during the meeting, not beforehand, and so that's my reason for a motion to reconsider. I believe we need to operate with the utmost public transparency, and on that occasion, we failed to do that by not providing information on the agenda in advance.
Okay, and then DeeDee, I'm so sorry, but I'm going to have you repeat that for Len, because that is something that's technical, and so it does matter, and... Because I'm a little confused when you said the item was not included in the agenda, but we were talking about appearance review, right? So we spoke about appearance review almost the entire evening. So maybe just say what you said so that Len can hear and maybe clarify.
Okay, so the appearance review agenda item was that list of red and green options. Here's the memo. It had those red and green options, and appearance review, single-family dwellings, response to town council, and it was merely going through this list and choosing the ones that we felt should be added or not to appearance review. The recommendation on this memo was staff recommends the town council consider exploring all or any number of the options that have zero to low risk for Burt Harris Act claim and are permissible due to Senate Bill 180. There was nothing in this agenda item four indicating that we would need to go back to Len's memo of July 21st. Caitlin got up and made copies of this for us during the discussion, and then all of a sudden, we were told we had to vote on option one or two. So our public process was not transparent. I didn't know we were going to come for a vote on this. I thought we were just discussing the items in red and green, and the public didn't have their fair chance to weigh in on it. And for that reason, I'm making a motion to reconsider, because I believe we had a procedural failure in transparency.
And I second it.
Yeah. Len, can you give us your opinion on that, please?
And this did come up at Planning and Zoning Board last night. Look, you know, my understanding was that the council was... This was sort of the final step in this process. We've rehashed and rehashed and rehashed this appearance review slash harmony for single-family homes. I thought that was the last step, was staff to throw out every possible option to come up with a plan. So that was always my understanding, but I guess that wasn't everybody's understanding. I don't think that was... Now, I understand what Councilmember Halpern's saying. I don't think it was legally defective. I mean, it's, you know, absolutely, you can consider stuff that's not even on the agenda. This was sort of a corollary to, okay, we're going to go through all the options, council's going to determine what they want, and then we're going to come up with a direction. That's how I always saw it, but, I mean, I guess other people saw it different ways. It wasn't legally defective, but if I understand what DeeDee's saying, is she's saying that she wanted more transparency and discussion, but it wasn't legally deficient.
So DeeDee, I want to make sure I understand. You would like to have the appearance review re-agended, agended, I guess? Is that the word?
Adverndized.
And start over with the entire agenda item? Or what are you asking for exactly?
I would include the memo from August 26th if we need to, just as backup, and the July 21st memo from Len Rubin that Caitlin handed out during the meeting that has the options one or two, and the recommendation, you know, should... Well, I guess it goes back to whatever the recommendation on here was, but it needs, I believe it needs to be publicly noticed. I've heard from residents who said, oh, I didn't know that was going to be on the agenda. Even residents who, you know, Mr. Stelludo said to me, and, you know, he has a differing opinion. People from both sides of the opinion said, I didn't know council was going to vote on this tonight. So I think in all fairness to the people of the town, both items should be on there, and then a recommendation from staff will be, you know, council... Whatever, I'm trying to find what the recommendation was here. Anyway, it should be publicly noticed, is my point.
All right, then the other question I have, Rob, is what does this... So it unwinds, Len, sorry. It unwinds that, but it was never actually enforced. Diana, I'm talking, thank you. It was not actually enforced yet, right? So it doesn't really unwind anything. They would continue to do the metrics and all the applications?
We would continue to do what we've been doing.
Okay.
Which is essentially what we'll do until something new is adopted. Now, the, you know, there was a course of action adopted last meeting, and then staff, we were getting ready to move on that course of action, but that's where we stand right now.
Can I hear what position that puts the staff in? And, Rob, do you want to just comment on that, and then I'll go through discussion, and then...
Well, it puts us in the position of continuing to utilize the metrics that are not codified in our zoning code and not formally approved by council, although we've had, I believe, three, four, five different meetings on this topic and twice voted to remove architectural review and appearance review, and we're back in the same position. You know, so typically, when an organization finds that they have a significant problem with the way that their rules and regulations are being enforced, you identify it, you announce and be publicly transparent that you have an issue that needs to be resolved, you come up with a solution, and you then prevent that similar circumstance from happening again in the future. Central to that is the idea that you try to work through that efficiently and with full public transparency. I don't know that we've achieved the efficiency element, seeing that we're now, you know, after having voted twice, coming back to discuss it again. And I'm not quite certain there was, you know, a good case for surprise, but I do get Councilmember Halpern's concern about the public, irrespective of what the meeting minutes in succession of five different meetings have told the public and staff and council. We would be enforcing those metrics again that are not codified, and really, that's not something we should be doing.
All right, thank you. Mary Ann?
Well, you know, if DeeDee wants to change her mind and change her vote, why isn't she honest enough to say that and not hide behind some procedure? She can vote as she wants to, and if she wants to take a vote, please do. That's all I have to say.
All right. Diana?
There's a motion on the table to reconsider, and the motion on the table to reconsider will have to be voted on, and then we'd have to have a separate motion to keep our harmony codes, is the way that I understand this would proceed? Or is the motion to reconsider means we go back to the harmony codes?
If you're reconsidering, then it would essentially roll back what you decided the last meeting. We'd be back at ground zero again.
Okay, I passed out a memo. I disagree with the town manager's characterization that you cannot have guidance that you use to enforce your codes. It is kind of like what I understand with our building permits and what do you include in a building permit? All of that's not necessarily in our code. You get a packet from the building department. And it's, so it's not that unusual to have documents that explain your code that's not codified into the code. And the July 21st analysis that Len Rubin gave us, the subjective part of harmony has been upheld. He gave us several cases, that Burns versus town of Palm Beach, you know, so it's... The subjective elements, other towns and other municipalities do that as well without having specific information in their codes for the subjective. I thought Aldo explained it very well about character of the neighborhood or whatever. It's just not all of it is spelled out, because part of planning is judgment, and that has been upheld in other cases. So I'm in our... So I disagree that that's illegal in any manner, and if I interpreted that wrong, I apologize, but I think it's quite common to have guidance document that explain code provisions. And the... Our comprehensive plan, which is our bible that all our codes come from, it does require us to have visual continuity of the community, and it requires us to have consistent character of the neighborhood. That's Policy 11.1. And I don't know how we do that without these harmony reviews. And we saw yesterday in the Planning and Zoning Board meeting when the 7,500-square-foot house was approved in a neighborhood of 2,500-square-foot homes and... house was approved in a neighborhood of 2,500-square-foot homes, and the two houses that there had been negotiation with the, with the Planning and Zoning Board on the two 5,000-square-foot homes that were approved recently. It's just, we just, it, it is important that we have these codes in place, or we wouldn't have these discussions with the builders and the architects and the designers as to how can you make your home fit in with the context of your community. So, if we lose those tools, I think it, it would be very detrimental.
Hi, John?
No discussion from me.
All right, I know that, Len, you said it was not legally defective. I, I just want to mention a few things, if we're gonna be coming back to this item, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. We did not get rid of architectural review. The state did. Two years ago, they mandated that all municipalities in the state could not do architectural review. So, if somebody was gonna put a dome home up four years ago, we had that control, but when they mandated we couldn't do architectural review, they could do it. It doesn't matter if we put a harmony, you know, metric in there or not. In fact, it kind of sounds like it might be pushing them towards that, because you could put a dome home up, and we can't stop anyone, no matter what we have in our harmony code. So, that's the first thing. We cannot dictate architectural review any longer. The appearance review, which was the metrics that we were doing for our appearance review, and Planning and Zoning was doing that, were not codified. So, without them being codified, we, we could be challenged on that. If we're willing to take on lawsuits from the single-family homes, then that's the direction that council will go. But everybody needs the information. It's so important, because we're not getting all the information out there. And without all the information, our residents are not informed. They come up and think we're taking harmony away in the entire town. We're not doing that. That stays there. All of the appearance review stays there for commercial, multifamily, commercial office, medical office, it all stays there. It doesn't affect anyone but those single-family homes, and that's where the single-family homeowners are talking about their property rights and, and their homes. What we came up with last time, before this change, is that we would do an architectural pattern book, and that architectural pattern and design book could help with harmony, because the harmony is how the house looks, the balconies, the porches, all the things that you put together to make your house look nice in a neighborhood, instead of possibly all these modern homes that people are really objecting to. So, I think, you know, we can move forward with that, hopefully. The vote, sounds like we're gonna go ahead and rehear it, so everyone can come back in, and we can go ahead and debate it again. But I just wanna make sure the correct information is out there as well. And if there's no more discussion, I can do a roll call. All right, wanna do a roll call? Mayor Wheeler, you wanna go ahead and rephrase the, the motion?
Reconsider the September 8th motion regarding the harmony item. Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, so I think the key here is to put this on maybe the next agenda, cause I think it's important enough with not only the applicants coming in, not, you know, having to go under the metrics we're on right now that are not codified, that we should go ahead and put this into the next agenda, or we could have it. Do you know what's on the agenda, Caitlin, so far?
The agenda deadline for the September 24th was yesterday, so the packets will be dispersed out, but what's on there right now is the Kagan Park discussion, the JB0 RFP, the second budget hearing, the community survey for moving forward on the master development plan survey, discussion on record-keeping.
So, just council, we have to have two weeks' notification, correct? To hold a meeting for the public?
No, it's at least 24, 48 hours to publish an agenda to hold a meeting.
But I think we wanna give people more time. Can I have council's discussion on when they'd like to have that meeting? John?
I, I would like to have it as soon as practical, but did we rule out having it on the next regularly scheduled council meeting just now?
The packets go out tomorrow for the September 24th.
I would add it, it's pertinent.
Len, can you give us your opinion on that? Is it possible to add it?
It's, yeah, it's possible to add it, but, you know, that's up to you, how much time, and I don't know what you expect from backup from staff. I think the council needs to be clear what you're expecting, because it is a tight deadline.
Well, so, as I said before, it would be that memo from Len Rubin on July 21st, 2025? Because that was the item we were required to vote on?
So, so you're not saying you want any additional backup, DeeDee, you're just saying that you want, you just want to come back?
I think our direction was clear on the red and yellow and green suggestions. I, I don't think we need to rediscuss those. I think it was the decision between options one and two, whether to keep or get rid of harmony. I don't know if there's other information that would help, you know, the residents, because, you know, everybody keeps saying, well, there's, you know, all this misunderstanding. If there's any other guiding documents that staff feels would be useful to the public to have for this, then I would encourage that.
I have a suggestion. The, the red and green boxes, the town, town council has voted three different times to keep harmony, and every time it goes back to staff, staff comes back with 34, 268, and just the maximum square footage. And the same was true in that last memo, which we had red and green, and they, they were all red, because Senate Bill 180 doesn't allow you to do more restrictive, and it wasn't looking through the lens of the harmony review that we've had for the last two years that's not impacted by Senate Bill 180. If you look at it through the harmony lens of Senate Bill 180, those red and, so many more of the red ones turned green, or at least yellow, because they're not more restrictive than what we would be doing under the harmony language, under the May 2nd workshop version of the harmony language. I'm not sure, there's another unknown here to me, and it was the town's response to the Scott Shaw case on the harmony review, and weighing all the factors the same versus when you look at the bulk and scale. The reason that those numbers are not somehow an illegal metric is that once it's not a go-no-go based on that metric, then you go to the purple boxes. And the nice thing about the purple boxes is where the subjective items lay, and it's where that judgment lays, and that's the part, how is the site orientation, or the setback, or the roof slope, or the balconies, you know, all the things that would make a really large, massive house look less big, and the landscaping. And in the response from the town to the Scott Shaw complaint, that the house was too big next to him, it seemed that we were looking at all of those nine, 10 metrics the same. You weren't looking, you weren't doing your mass bulk review, and then you had subjective elements, and you weren't looking at your scale review, and then you have the subjective purple box review, but we were counting them all the same. And at the meeting last night, the staff memo seemed to do that as well, which was a, which is different than was said at that May 2nd, and is different than the way I understand. I've had gotten the last six reviews of harmony, and the bulk mass is one test, the scale is another test, and those, all those other factors were considered mitigation, and it was those mitigation that actually allowed you to do the metrics, because then it's judgment, it's, you're relying on judgment, you're not relying on a hard number. So, that's two items. The red, green from the last memo, if they're viewed within harmony, can we have more of those as green? And the second part is, are we now somehow prohibited from applying the harmony code as we did at the May 2nd workshop, as it was explained through those PowerPoints?
So, which of these things, Diana, are backup materials? I, I understand you have questions, but what, what do you want from staff for this agenda item?
The red, green options, and do we now have a new harmony review based on the Scott Shaw?
I'd really rather not be talking about the Shaw petition, because it is still pending. But I will say to, to council member, or Vice Mayor Protem Davis, if you read the code, there's nine factors. It doesn't say that mass and scale and bulk are more important than landscaping, orientation. There's nine factors. That's it, nine factors. And it says you consider these nine factors. That's what the code says.
So, anyway, I don't wanna get into a debate now over, over the content of it. So, the backup materials will be Len Rubin's July 21st memo and the red and green options that we discussed at the September 8th meeting.
So, you're asking DeeDee to start that red and green and yellow discussion over again?
No, I think it's just, no, no, not start it over. Those are just backup for reference, if need be.
Okay, got it. And Mary Ann, did I come to you yet?
You know, I, I see the writing on the wall. Why bother? Why go through it? Because three people don't want harmony, two want harmony, so let's go with the three people, let the dice fall, and if somebody sues the town, then so it will be.
Well, I think we have to go through the process and procedures of doing it properly.
No, we are not, we cannot go back and forth. I mean, we are never accomplishing anything. Let's just be a vote for vote. They voted for harmony to get it. DeeDee obviously wants it, so let's just finish the whole discussion. Let's.
Did we finish the motion?
No, I've, I've still got discussion. John?
I, I don't know where we are.
We voted on the.
I have another item for council comment. I, I don't know that we're, are we still debating? I don't wanna debate the harmony thing.
Well, we're talking about what to break that.
We're debating on what's gonna be additional backup.
Specifically, so, go ahead, John.
I think we can put it on the council agenda for the next council meeting, as long as we keep it simple. The agenda topic should be a council discussion on site plan appearance for single-family homes. And the backup material should be as mentioned by DeeDee Halpern, period, with no intervening new staff memorandum.
Okay, John, that's good. I agree.
All right, and then, Rob, did you wanna add anything now?
No, I was gonna say the same thing. It's basically the matrix with the red and green, and Len's memo is what we were planning on presenting, and that sounds like where we ended up, so.
Okay, can we have a consensus, at least, that we're gonna do exactly what DeeDee and John are saying? I'll give a consensus, so we have three. Okay.
Okay, I have an additional comment item. I wanna talk about the council hour from August 22nd and read an email council received from Danielle Underwood. "I'm writing this email in regard to the cocktail hour on Friday. While attending the cocktail hour, I was appalled at the behavior of the town manager. His behavior was unprofessional and uncalled-for. He screamed, yelled, and demoralized residents, business owners, and even council members. The way this man spoke to DeeDee was ridiculous. The town manager should be professional and courteous at all times, and he represents the town. The way he called council people liars to the residents and even to the council people's faces was not professional. The residents and business owners that witnessed this would really like action to be, take place." Also, following that council hour, we received an email from Cindy Wolf. She says, her email contains a few things, but she says, "I'm writing today to comment that the council hour last Friday was an absolute S show. It was astounding to witness the town manager telling a local businessperson that only he was telling the truth, and anything contradictory to his word came from someone who was a liar and was lying," his words. "The business owner was trying to have a discussion and bringing up points of view that she had heard from other council members. He continued to say that only he was telling the truth, so she went to get DeeDee Halpern, who had expressed a differing view. He admitted to the attending group that he said that anyone not agreeing with him was a liar and was lying, which would of course include DeeDee and any other council member this person had spoken to. This comment was witnessed by the business owner, Mr. and Mrs. Black, DeeDee, and me, being Cindy. This is inexcusable, inappropriate, and highly unprofessional. I find this very concerning, and you should too." Earlier today, I, I read the email between Mr. Cole and Mr. Karis, where Mr. Cole tells Mr. Karis to stop embarrassing himself by asking for the payment that was due to him. In, in Mr. Cole's resume that we hired him based on, it says, "I lead with empathy and am firmly committed to diversity of opinion and respect, both of which I view as foundational elements for organizational success. Cultivating and maintaining respectful, trusting relationships is a theme that would carry through my entire tenure. I don't believe Town Manager Cole has lived up to his expectation, and I'm making a motion to terminate him now effectively based on this unprofessional behavior." I, I think he's, he's divided council and, and done the opposite of what a town manager should do to lead by example, and I'd like a second, please.
I'll second it.
What are we seconding?
Terminating Rob Cole. I, I'm, this is discussion, and I am not prepared for no discussion. I'm gonna tell you, DeeDee. Let me talk, because I'm gonna tell the truth about what happened that evening. It's very dishonest and shameful, DeeDee, that at council hour, you told residents and business owners that three of us approved Plaza La Mer at 9010 and 184 units. We did not approve any of the plan proposed on August 6th. That misinformation has misled the residents and a business owner that I gave the facts to at council hour. She then returned to me after speaking with you, because you told her we voted for it. I then brought the business owner to Mr. Cole, because at that point, people are confused. I'm saying one thing, DeeDee's saying another thing. So, I brought that person, the owner of a business in Plaza La Mer, to Mr. Cole, and I put him in the firing line, because he had to tell her that that was wrong information. And so, it forced him to have to tell her that that was false, what you had said. So, that is wrong, DeeDee. You did, she came to me.
Waving fingers.
She came to me. You, I don't know how many people you misinformed at the demonstration about this, but spreading, misleading, or false information is wrong. And you're now doing an action on our town manager, who is a great town manager, because you got called out. You got called out, actually, for not telling the truth.
That's absolutely wrong. Let me speak.
It is true, and we can go to the business owners if you want.
Mayor, with all due respect, when I was mayor, I allowed you to speak, even when you were criticizing me.
I hadn't finished, so, go ahead.
I never said that it passed. I never said we changed the code. Let me finish.
I'm not talking.
I never even issued a public statement on it. What I said was that a vote to reject the 9010 is leaving it open on the table. I never said we approved 184 units. That was clear, that we never did, and I didn't say that 9010 was an acceptance, or, or that it was gonna move forward in any way. But when you vote not to reject something, you're simply leaving it on the table, and you are accepting it. And now, if you wanna mince semantics, that's fine, but that does not, regardless of what you think was said, and I didn't mislead the public, I am not misleading the public, I continually tell the truth, but that is no excuse for the town manager to call me a liar and yell at me in public. He absolutely did, and you can, you can say I'm lying, but I'm not. I, I didn't even say that, and I resent you putting words in my mouth.
I'm not, this is from a business owner, and I'm not gonna argue with you what you said, I'm just telling you what she said. And for anybody, and I'll get into this during my council comments, for anybody to think that, that you can twist the meaning of three council members approving something just because they didn't vote.
No, I never said they approved it. I patently did not say that.
Hang on, I'm talking now. You can, you, you can't give this false information out. You can't, you haven't done anything in writing, no, but you do it on the backside when you talk to individuals. It's not the first time that happens. I have told, I've been told by municipalities over and over and over again of the things that you say, and it's out there, and it's not good, DeeDee. And I'm gonna ask this town council, everyone, to make sure that we are respecting each other, and I'll get into that a little bit more, but. But Rob, you've got, I want you to have the opportunity to talk about this.
Sure. The way this all started was there was a communication made that upset some of our town council members and misled the public. That communication, I believe was, may have been in writing, I'm not sure.
It wasn't from me.
DeeDee, let the town manager talk, thank you.
Part of the problem is that I'm being alleged to have accused somebody that I made no such accusation. Factually speaking, that never occurred. But I'll explain. So this all started with someone disseminating a claim to the Juneau Beach community that three of our town council members voted in favor of 9010 as a way to shape development on the target development sites. They did not vote affirmatively 9010 and it was not an accurate portrayal. So the effort was made to correct that information. Ahead of that council night meeting, apparently there was some effort to agitate people because they came really inflamed and wanting to be very aggressive in asserting their viewpoints. The group that you're referring to when this conversation took place was first attacking me alleging that I had taken cash money from developers and that I was involved some way in behaviors that would be legally impermissible, ethically impermissible and something that would be entirely inconsistent with what I do as a professional city manager. I tried to take the group that had approached me, the business person and others, away from those people who were attacking me for taking cash money and getting very close in my face over it, was not yelling at the point. And in fact, one of our law enforcement officers had to step up and stand over my shoulder as this conversation was taking place for fear that this was going to become physical. And when it comes to misinformation, agitating to the people to the point where they threaten seemingly physical conflict is something that we've seen play out in this nation very unfavorably. And I would encourage people sitting in positions like us on a dais and elected official roles and responsibilities to measure how it is that they inflame public opinion because one never can tell how that plays out when these individuals get excited. So that night, I was being confronted very aggressively by a couple of people. I tried to separate from that group of people and move the smaller group that I was trying to explain what was going on to aside. But this other group kept following us over. And, and so there was a very aggressive interaction taking place. And one of the questions amidst all of the people who were talking to me at the same time, despite the fact that I was trying to focus on the business person and answer her questions, one of them says, well, how can we trust what you're saying when we have two others saying that they voted in favor of it? And yes, in the moment, I did reply. If there are people saying that they voted in favor of it, you'd have to ask them why they're lying. As soon as I said that, Ms. Wolf went straight to DeeDee and said that Rob Cole is calling you a liar. And no, that did not happen. What I said is if anyone is asserting that three members of town council voted in favor of 9010, and this was amidst a very aggressive conflict with people getting right in my face. I mean, I haven't had that happen in a public setting like that in my entire career. But for whatever reason, these people came stoked and wanted conflict. And so Ms. Wolf went running over DeeDee, brought her over, said, Mr. Cole just called you a liar. When in fact, all I said is if what they were saying is true, they would have to ask them why they're lying. And really, we need to pull the blanket off of all this misinformation that's being circulated and reveal the facts. Because if people can't be informed with factual information, how can they be effective public participants in these conversations? And we have a duty as sworn public officials to, one, adhere to the law, two, be ethical in our conduct, three, help inform public participation in critical public decisions and not undermine that through either A, continuing to do things that we know are not permissible under the law, or B, misrepresenting factual information as though it's fact simply to attack other people. This shouldn't be about attacking other people. It should be about us coming together, both as staff, the elected officials and the community to make good decisions. Yet, one of the focal points of some members on our council is to emphasize conflict, to the point of where there's been one misrepresented fact after another. And I don't know how it is that members of the public can be expected or supported in making sound decisions and effective public participation if we can't at least provide them with accurate information and not intentionally try to inflame public conversations to point at whoever it is that we want to point at that day as the evil person needing to be taken down.
Can I finish?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I didn't say that we voted to adopt 9010. I did not say that. Diana sent a newsletter putting her point of view out there. And I was somehow lumped in with her point of view simply because the two of us were on the different side of the vote. That's one thing. We could go into the semantics of the 9010 and all that acceptance. When you, when you don't reject it, you're accepting it on some level. You're leaving the concept on the table. But I didn't tell people that we voted for 184 units. And I didn't tell people that we adopted 9010. That's clearly not the case. But I'm not here to argue the semantics. I'm here to argue that the town manager's behavior was rude and that two residents, a resident and a business owner heard the same thing. And I was shouted at and I don't appreciate that. I believe the major was standing there when he saw that you were there. I'm not going to ask you to testify. But, but it wasn't appropriate. It just, that's not how we should be conducting ourselves. And I'm not, you know, spreading inflammatory rumors. And I resent you teaming up to try to gaslight me and the public into thinking that, you know, your behavior has been saintly and in the best interest of the town when quite frankly, it's been divisive. The newsletters the town managers sent shouldn't be peppered with personal opinions and threats about, well, if, you know, the cost of doing nothing or sitting idle. You know, the town manager should be bringing people together, not pitting council members against each other.
Mary Ann?
You know, I'm ashamed for all of us here. We are, we are providing a spectacle to the town. And that should never happen. I'm really shaken and appalled. And I think we should just stop at this meeting and not go any further. This is it. I cannot take anymore.
Sure.
Good afternoon, council. I only feel I need to say something because I don't want to be injected into anything that I really, it's not appropriate for me to be injected into. I observed one person yelling that afternoon because I was in close proximity to the mayor and to Rob. The sergeant was on the other side of the lobby because we had many, many people, as you know, in here. So we just spread out. The one person that I observed yelling, or at least in what I would consider yelling to be, was a member of the community. He was in front of Mr. Cole being very animated. That was after he was very animated in front of the mayor. And I actually stepped in very closely. That was one individual all afternoon that I was kind of concerned about. I didn't know. The only thing I would ask everybody to maybe just respectfully just pause and consider here, and a couple of you have heard me say this, the acoustics here are terrible. Absolutely terrible. You get 25, 30 or more people in that lobby. We all have to raise our voices just to be heard. From my perspective, and because I was brought into this conversation, this is why I'm saying it. From my perspective, I heard a number of people with raised voices just trying to communicate because the acoustics in here are terrible. And I just felt that I had an obligation to do what is right and to make sure I set the record straight as far as what my involvement was or was not. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and continue with council. No, no, we need to continue with council comments. I think all of us deserve to have our comments out.
No, I made a motion.
There's a motion in a second.
To do what?
To terminate the town manager. That was DeeDee's motion.
Right, we have to do a roll call then.
A discussion?
Sorry, I'm sorry, John. Go ahead.
I always ask for discussion before that roll call, always.
I know.
Because sometimes, you know, I'm going to let other people speak first. I'm not going to jump in there and say, let me speak. But I am going to speak on the subject. Mary Ann, you missed it. We are looking forward to seeing you at League of Cities in Orlando a month ago. And we had the opportunity to hear from many other towns on their issues and their issues and their problems. And I'll guarantee you, there's any other town in Florida would be happy to trade their problems for our problems. Guaranteed. If you hear what they're going through, be so thankful that we have what we have. Now, on the subject of town managers, more than one town manager, I think we are all, I believe the four of us were at the same seminar where one of the town managers pointed out how some towns are blessed with long-serving town managers that serve for years. Years ago, Palm Beach Gardens was in turmoil. They went through a town manager every year and then they got the one they have now, who used to work in Lantana and he's been there for like 20 years. Another town, Delray Beach, they go through a town manager about every nine months. Now, some people think that's comical, but the town managers explain the long-term damage that town councils do to their town by turning over with town manager after town manager. Because when you're looking for a new town manager, town managers review all the information they can find out about your town. They go on YouTube. They know we're televised. They watch the circus. And if they get a rotten smell, they don't come anywhere near your town. So because for short-term political gain, anyone would ever jeopardize our long-term future, sorry, is wrong. I love this town. I have disagreements with the town manager. I have disagreements with the last town manager, David Dias. I had disagreements with Joe Labello and Gil Nelson. And that's what they are. They're disagreements. Sometimes I may have thought they were rude. But we don't throw them out. Not when we have someone of the high quality, of caliber, of a guy like Rob Cole.
Mary Ann, do you want to? DeeDee, go ahead, Diana, if you want to have any more discussion?
I just have some disagreements with the town manager's newsletter that's called The Truth.
Oh wait, we're not on council comments yet for that. We're still in the motion and we're, you know, any other discussions? Is that part of what you're going to discuss about the town manager?
The dissatisfaction because it's called The Truth and there's a lot of opinions in it. And so I did provide documentation to each of the town council members and included the minutes of the meeting. And for the minutes of the meeting for the, for our work in progress for the master plan, it was a motion to reject the proposed 9010. And the motion failed two to three with Wheeler, Callahan and Hosta opposed. So if you're opposed to rejecting, then you've pretty much accepted the 9010. The problem with the master plan, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council came to us in August. Their final work, if you looked at their Gantt chart, was going to be in October. So this was their proposal for our commercial area. It was 9010 and turning it all into condominiums with, of course, 10% commercial. And it was shocking because it didn't comport with any of the public comment that had been provided by Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council or the meetings that I sat in, which I went to all the meetings, except that it wasn't privy to the individual, the individual interview. So it was quite shocking. So I did put out a newsletter that this is shocking. And by the town manager and the mayor saying that this vote never happened, it actually shuts down public comment and caused people to protest in the streets because people are very interested in keeping our mom and pop commercial areas. So I think the more that you can be honest about what happened and allow people to comment back, that that's what creates the cohesive community and puts trust back in our government. So we need this better communication from our town leaders. I would suggest that we have a committee that reviews the town manager's newsletters to make sure that they're positive, that they uplift the community and that they're not, they're not espousing their own a viewpoint that's different than what the majority of the council had previously voted on. So those would be my comments. And, well, one more, one more. I would request that we're always collaborative and that, that we have complete candor. And I think that's so important in leadership. And I'm not seeing that. So that's, that's my disappointment. And I think that we can come back with action items and maybe how we reestablish these things. But, but right now, I don't have that. And it really started with the communications around the harmony. I felt like it wasn't, you know, the whole thing that harmony is still in the cove for the single family homes because of Euclidean-based zoning has as a basis harmony. It just, it was too many words and not a yes, not yes and no to these really critical questions for us all to understand. So I felt a little bamboozled by all of that. And I think that our community, that we should over-communicate and we should over-communicate in a positive manner, not this excessive negativity, but positive manner and so that we can all feel informed and uplifted as a community.
All right. First of all, for everyone listening, and I hope everybody hears this, we should feel so very lucky to have Rob as our town manager. He is educated in city administration. He brings historically so much experience with him, a wealth of information. He's articulate and he writes about the facts. And I'm going to go into the newsletter just a little bit because that newsletter belongs to the residents. It doesn't belong to the five of us. And the whole reason that started was because there was misinformation going out in council members' newsletters. His responsibility and all of our responsibilities should be to inform our residents, but his remains independent. It's not political in nature. This becomes a political newsletter when people are writing this and misinforming on what's actually happening. And at least we've got Rob's newsletter that states the facts. It doesn't state his opinions. DeeDee, you sent an email to your residents, which I feel was out of line and I think that was divisive. You said his newsletter included opinions and policy guidance promoting a particular viewpoint on future development in our town. Rob wrote back. He said, he said that, that he, he only states facts from the meeting. And he, let me finish on, it's my discussion.
This is not supposed to be a personal attack.
DeeDee, I'm sorry, you're out of order. Stop.
You're personally attacking me.
It is my discussion.
You're personally attacking me.
You can go back and discuss later. I am saying that I think it was wrong. That's my opinion. You should never send a newsletter out without discussing this with council first. I think that's wrong. That's my opinion, okay? You then, Rob responded by stating, a government city management professional has significant responsibility to inform both the public and council with accurate facts, data and analysis to support informed public participation and sound policymaking and ensure transparency for the public. This includes playing a critical role in identifying and overcoming public misinformation, which is what people are hearing. I heard it during the council comments. I hear it every time. I'm like, where did they get that except from the newsletters? inaccurate information has caused Inaccurate information has caused people to be inflamed in this town. And you have to have honesty. You have to have transparency. And that's what Rob's newsletter brings. Just because facts don't conform to maybe what a council member's opinion is, that is no reason to shut down those facts. And that's what's going on here, is people are trying to shut down the facts because they don't agree with them. Diana, I'm gonna go to your letter to Rob. We've all read Rob's response. There was nothing in your specific examples where Rob inaccurately reported anything in his September 10th edition of the facts. Your example referenced the May 2nd workshop, suggesting that he advised the public the council reached consensus to repeal harmony. Rob replied to you and stated, "There is no basis for what you said," because he did not communicate what you indicated. He reported that staff was instructed to continue with status quo, which was what he reported on. Rob also wrote back to you that none of the other examples document a factual discrepancy either. Rob has a professional and ethical responsibility to provide factual information, to support sound town council decision-making, as well to inform the public. And to make a stance that Rob cannot say anything because our codes, that's the other thing you mentioned, that Rob should not say anything about our codes because it was, when he said it was consistent with state law, because we're in litigation, is just an excuse for censoring him again. You used the gazebo as an example, and that had nothing to do with Rob's newsletter. So Rob wrote to you that there is no substance in your assertion that necessitates any correction, let alone removal of any of the entire edition from the public view. And we sometimes need to be reminded of our position here. We're council members. That means we set policy. We're not the CEO of the town. We're not micromanagers. We don't censor, and we especially don't try to control everything that is said in town to limit public information because it doesn't align to your narrative or to your personal agenda. So I don't respect either of you using the residents in a fashion to shut down our town manager's newsletter, to censor it, to try and get a vote, to let him go, by telling our residents inaccurate information about the substance of the newsletter. And that qualifies to me as misconduct, because you have undermined public integrity. If there's any other discussion, we can have a vote on this. And go ahead and repeat the motion, Caitlin.
I would like to add, you know, we are so concerned about harmony in buildings. Are they harmonizing? Well, I mean, I'm more concerned about harmony with people. And we are not portraying any harmony, but we want to really have it for buildings. That's very, very absurd. Kafkaesque. You should read him. I also, DeeDee, I was, before you said you voted, you wanted to revert or reverse your vote because--
I didn't say I wanted to reverse my vote. You're putting words in my mouth, so please don't--
I'm sorry.
Please don't misquote me.
You weren't prepared to vote.
I didn't say that either.
You said--
No, I did not.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
There's no personal attacks here. We're talking about policy and substance. This isn't the venue--
DeeDee, go ahead and let Mary Ann finish.
Okay. But you questioned it because you were not prepared that there should be a vote taken. At the same time, I'm not prepared to take a vote right now on the position of town manager. You're springing this on me like you claimed this was sprung on you last meeting. So you are doing the same thing. But I want you to know, I apologize personally to Rob, because this is a public lynching. And I'm ashamed for the people who have to witness, who are doing this. And, you know, some people might enjoy that, but I don't. And I don't care who is being lynched or so, but this is not-- I tell you, people probably all over Palm Beach County say, "Let's look at that town council meeting. Let's see what they were doing." And they will have an entertainment. We are providing entertainment for these people. We are not, how can anybody take us seriously if we are talking like this to each other?
Well, let me--
It is wrong.
I express some honest concerns.
And so do I.
And in response, instead of empathizing or saying, you know, "Let's look into these concerns," what I get is an attack from the mayor on Diana and myself, turning it into a personal attack. And I think that that's really deplorable. Instead of sticking to the facts and talking about how we can, you know, build consensus or mend fences, you know, it's further, you know, it was retaliatory. The mayor's response was retaliatory against Diana and I, and I think that that's uncalled for.
Against me, not against I. Sorry, I'm--
Anyway--
I'm a medical fanatic.
The clock is ticking, and we should move on to other council--
I'm gonna respond to you, DeeDee. The mayor has a responsibility to get the facts out. This is not about if we, trying to bring this team together is good, and that's what my responsibility is. But when people are not telling the truth, it has to come out. And you cannot say the mayor is not doing her job, because my job is to tell the residents the truth. And I'm not gonna sit by while I see misinformation being sent out to the residents. I see infactual information and a vote to release Rob as our town manager when you are not even giving factual information. That is my responsibility. I'm sorry. And I'm not gonna be dedicated to keeping a team together that is doing this on our council. I mean, John Calligan is emotional about this whole thing, because obviously, no one underst-- this is political in nature. I feel that this is totally political in nature. You know, people deserve the truth out there, and it's time that that truth has come out. And so your actions are gonna be called out if you do this. And you can't expect the mayor to sit by and let this happen, because we've had enough of it, and everybody sees it. Other municipalities see it, and they are disgusted. I talk to them. I talk to mayors. I talk to council members. It has to stop. And that's what we're getting at right now. And we do have to take a vote. And Mary Ann, I don't think you meant that you're not able to vote on whether we release Rob or not, but you're gonna have to make that vote, because--
No, but I just showed that, you know, we are supposed to vote now on this, according to DeeDee. She made the motion. Diana seconded it. Am I correct so far? But at the same time, she used that for justifying to bring back the harmony issue, because at that point of time, she was not prepared to vote on it. So I'm just--
You're not talking about that.
I'm just pointing out that dichotomy. That's all. I'm prepared to vote.
Okay, we're gonna have to, we're gonna do a roll call.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Motion fails 2 to 3.
All right, I'm gonna, Mary Ann, do you have any council comments? You don't. Okay, I remember I already figured--
I have one comment. I would prefer if people on the days did not message during the council hour, like Diana Davis does it next to me. It distracts me, and I don't know what she's talking to whom. People come in and out according to whether she messages or not. So I would like everybody to refrain on if we don't even hand in our phones. I'm willing, if I get an emergency call, I'm sure somebody will give the phone to me. But I do not like this.
All right.
Communication under the table.
Thank you. I think that's a respectful request, unless it's an emergency with your family or family member is texting you, and you need to respond. I think that's a respectful request that we should all just adhere to. All right, Diana?
No further comments.
John?
Are we on council comments now?
Council comments.
Did DeeDee finish her comments? I think she said she, was that the last one, DeeDee?
Yes, thank you.
At the League of Cities, we were treated to the opinions of Jacksonville Beach City Manager. He brought up a few things that I think were pretty important. One was the importance of having a strategic plan for the town, the advantages of having one. And so I'm glad to see that we're going to go forward in some manner with a strategic plan for our town. He also brought up a concept called council briefing, where once a month, the manager meets with the council as a group and informs the council of anything that they need to be informed about or should be informed about, about goings-on in town. This meeting that they have is not open for public comment, but certainly is open to the public for witnessing the meeting. He said that it also serves to provide a good venue for council members that have something on their mind to bring up, or a new idea, to present it to their colleagues and to the manager in a discussion-type setting, so that these type of things don't come up during a council meeting or council comments. Because council comments, just in our case, it's been at the end of the meeting, it's usually only a few minutes left, and they're rushed. People making a motion, calling for a vote, not on the agenda. It's not the way to do it. But I think we do need a method of bringing things up that we want to bring up for new ideas, or situations where there's hard feelings to air, without bringing it up at, you know, the tail end of each meeting. And I thought the council briefing session, a once-a-month council briefing session, was a very good way to do that. He mentioned a strategic plan in terms of the, a lot of the ideas or things that came up can be tagged to specific items in the strategic plan, and make sure those items are in agreement with the strategic plan, as well as your comprehensive plan or if a master plan, if you have one. So those type of discussions, you can talk about if it's in the budget. He used a question, an example of council members, and this is hypothetical. One council member would say, "I'd like to see all the trash cans in town painted purple." Okay? So maybe there's a validity of that. Maybe there's a reason. But you can bring up things like, is that advancing something in our strategic plan to have them purple? Are we gonna, do we want to be known as the purple town? Is it in our budget? What would it cost? How long would it be? Are we talking about privately regulating each private trash container, or only the ones we own? And things like that. So I'd like to suggest that, that we have some method of having a discussion with the town manager called council briefing the first Wednesday of each month. And that's my only council comment or request to discuss.
Everybody else has had their turn, right? I'm gonna go back into--
Did John make a motion for the first Wednesday?
No.
If we have time, I'll make a motion, but let's let the mayor have her time.
John, you have time. I mean, do you wanna, because mine's gonna be not that long, and I just want to make sure everybody's finished. Do you want to make a motion for--
I'll make a motion, first Wednesday of the month, 5:30, be designated as council briefing.
That we all come to? So then you have to have the attorney and the town clerk and--
Yes.
Do you want to, is it possible to do it? Sorry, you made the motion. We'll have to get a second first.
I'll second it.
Discussion, do you want to get, I mean, we need more detail. I mean, this is very difficult to just go into deciding this, and maybe we should--
Well, that's where amendments come from.
So you want to do it the first Wednesday of every month?
Shut it up a little bit.
First Wednesday of every month at 5:30, or 5 o'clock? Do you care? 5:30. And you want just the council? It's gonna be publicly noticed as well. And we need our town attorney there, because it's in the sunshine. We need Caitlin, and we need Rob. Correct?
Correct.
All right.
I have an idea. Could we do it before the council hour? Because, you know, like, on a Friday, we are already here at 4. We could do this from 3 to 4. It would just be more practical. That's what I think.
Yeah, I'm not, we have so many meetings right now, and especially in September. I think it needs to be kind of on a month-by-month basis. If, I think if it's warranted, we should do it. But I don't think we should absolutely make it mandatory at this stage. You know, we do want people to run for office, too. And I know when you start having 10 meetings in a month, that gets to be a little overwhelming for some people. So if we have a mandatory two meetings, are we gonna put that into the charter now? Are we gonna put that into, or is this just gonna be on a base-by-base situation? John, I'm asking you.
No, it's not a charter amendment. It's just the sense of the council, we're gonna schedule the first Wednesday of every month at 5:30 as a council briefing.
But is it, it's going to be mandatory? We don't decide at the next meeting? You want it to be absolute, then, just so we know what we're voting on?
Absolute.
Okay.
You can always change it later during one of the meetings, to say, "Let's stop this. It's a bad idea," and do away with it.
Okay. Anybody else have any discussion before we vote? And this is, John, just to be sure, that this is for council and not necessarily for agenda items. This is for council to review--
Council briefing for the council, for the town manager to brief council on any important issues that he thinks should be discussed with the council in a group setting. You know, he emails us individually, meets with us individually, but we don't ever talk about these things in a group. And we don't have an opportunity to talk about these things except at council meetings. This would be a better venue for bringing up those type of things as a group, so we can, he can hear our feedback as a group, which way we feel about the things he's presenting to us.
But no votes, right?
Give more opinion. See, you have to bring a paper and a pad and see who's, you know, who seems favorable, who seems opposed, and, you know, what to do with it. But no, it's not, it's not a formal voting thing. It's a discussion.
And my only comment would be, we should do it closer to the meeting, a week before the meeting, perhaps. And I'll let Rob--
Just a couple of points for the town council to consider. We're in the middle of an RFP for legal services, and we don't know when those legal firms are available and not. I don't think in the RFP, we put this kind of meeting in there. So just be aware that once we bring them on board, you know, that discussion about their availability on what days and all that would have to be part of it. And then, secondly, I would just like to call attention to, the more meetings we're doing in the evening, the more we're expecting of staff who otherwise wouldn't have to be working on those evenings. So just from a staffing perspective, I don't want it to go unnoticed that more meetings in the evening increases the burden on staff and their salaries. So effectively, we're paying them, you know, less for every meeting they have. And all your staff are fully committed to supporting whatever meetings the town council wants. Let's just be cognizant of what the ramifications are on the staff morale side when they're going to be participating in these as well.
All right. And I think, I probably won't vote for this, John, just because I think that it's our responsibility to go in every week and speak to all the staff members or to Rob about any concerns, questions we have, so that we're ready to vote when we get up here. I think that's just an extra meeting that we should be doing on our own. So, but thank you for the motion. And does anybody else have a comment? And we can go ahead and take a roll call. Thank you.
If I may make a clarification, it's a council briefing work session, so no public comments, but it's technically considered a work session, so no, thank you. Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes 3 to 2.
All right. I just want to make sure. So you're saying that we need to get a new attorney on board, too. We probably should have discussed that a little bit, just in that-- We probably should have discussed that a little bit, just, and that's what you said, Rob, is to maybe start this after...
I wasn't suggesting timing, only to be aware that in the middle of the RFP, we announced certain meeting expectations for that legal firm, and this probably wasn't, not one that was contemplated. So in discussions with them, we'd have to, you know, speak about meeting expectations, and then their scheduling as well. Scheduling, you know, would be whatever town council and that firm are able to work out.
All right, thank you. Okay, my council comments, I'm going to go, I'm going to go into these newsletters because it's time to get it all out. I think honesty and accuracy in newsletters is non-negotiable for our residents, and it's the responsibility of the council members that write them. Putting out false or misleading information has to stop. Diana Davis, you continue to make false statements about how your fellow council members voted, and when you publish council member names with this information to our residents, saying that we voted for Plaza Lomir at 90-10 and 184 units, this undermines the duty we owe to our citizens and to each other. It damages the trust the community places in us, and it does weaken the confidence in the work that we do up here on the dais. You're not entitled to your own set of facts. The public record is the record, and misrepresenting the council votes or spreading false information is dishonest. It has inflamed our community and outside communities. It has misled residents into forming opinions and making decisions based on inaccurate information, and that erodes the public trust in our government. Our job as council members is to serve residents and not to divide them. It can also create legal and ethical risk. If misinformation leads to lawsuits or financial harm, the town can face serious exposure. Diana, you're very much aware that a failed motion means only that approval was not granted on the motion. It cannot be twisted into meaning that council members approved the opposite. That is well-written and Robert's Rules of Order, and so that is false information that you were spreading to our residents. You also misrepresented a vote from 2022, a vote from 2023. Your emails go out with false information about what an agenda item pertains to, which again, misleads residents into forming opinions or making decisions based on inaccurate information. This has led forums to put hate threads to council members online. This is serious. It could be considered malfeasance for an elected official to deliberately misrepresent the facts of council proceedings. And again, the most recent false information is claiming that a failed motion means that council members voted for it. Council does have tools to respond when this happens. This is a breach of public trust. Knowingly lying about official actions may qualify as misconduct because it undermines public integrity. There's internal discipline processes. We can censor. We can remove titles by, on another council member. And those are things, if it continues, that I'm going to ask this board to look into. Once sworn in, providing false information to residents is a breach of your oath of office and fiduciary duty. Our residents deserve honesty and accuracy. That's the foundation of good governance. Sitting in this seat is a privilege. It really is. It's a privilege to be up here. And when we are not serving our residents and representing our community with facts, we're not doing our job up here. We were elected to serve, not to divide. I strongly urge anyone that's misleading our residents to honor the facts and focus on the job you were elected to do. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
I get to say something. I get to say something. I get, that's a misrepresentation. The August meeting was...